Mr. President, we have eight o'clock.
Morning, everyone. Happy New Year to all of you. Uh, Madam Clerk, could we get a roll call for the study session this morning, please?
Yes, Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Vice Secretary Robert Uden.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry. And President Michael Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Um. Public comments, anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item within our jurisdiction, not on the agenda? Um, nobody online or any written communications? Thank you. Uh, then let's go to items of study number one. And I'll turn that over to.
Uh, yeah, actually Diana Bortles is going to introduce our newest employee.
Good.
Good morning, Mr. President and Board. I am happy to introduce to you Abel Carlos. He is our newest wastewater maintenance worker one. Um, Abel comes to us from the city of Huntington Beach where he worked as a maintenance worker apprentice for over two years. He also has experience working as an apprentice under a plumber, plumbing contractor. Uh, Abel already has his commercial driver's license and his grade one, uh, C W E A grade one collection system operator certificate. And we're, we are very happy to have Abel on board. He's proving to be a great fit to our team. So please join me in welcoming him.
Abel, welcome. Uh, I, I think you'll find this a, an enjoyable place to work. Um, we have, we, I, I say this, so and we all agree, we have the best staff of the special district anywhere in the state of California, and we're looking forward to you fitting into that puzzle as well. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. I bet Joel's glad to have you, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Again, welcome, Abel. All right, let's move to item number two, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh.
Oh, David, I'm sorry.
Yes, David, uh, our code enforcement, we give his report.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. I'm here to present my report for the month of December, twenty twenty-three. Uh, covering three enforcement topics, including scavenging graffiti and trash container enforcement. In the month of December, I encountered, uh, seven scavengers throughout the city. Uh, any questions about that so far?
areas that we've talked about before?
There are, and, uh, I believe Oggle Street in, in the description. Uh, I let him know that this is going to be his last verbal warning. I mean, it's again another senior citizen. Um, claiming he's using these recyclables for, for a disabled lady that's, lives in the neighborhood there. Um, when I asked if I could talk to her to let her know about the ordinance, he was, oh, well, she's out of town, blah, blah, blah. Um, so, um, this morning I did see his truck parked on Oggle with, uh, three of our trash carts in the back of it. So I guess he uses our trash carts to haul his recyclables to wherever he's turning those in.
Are they his carts or did he take them from someone else?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I mean, the neighbor says it seems like he has a lot of carts. But he, he does have a, uh, it's a fourplex there. So he has, you know, four different units.
Uh, David, do you know where they're taking the recyclables these days?
Basically from a neighbor because I inquired about whose truck this was with our carts in the back. Because it's not a common, you know, occurrence for me to see that. And he, he said it's the older guy that lives next door. He, he uses them to haul his recyclables to wherever he's cashing them in.
Any idea how much, uh, these scavengers might make if you weren't there?
Hard to say.
A lot of, it, it.
Hard to say, especially after the holidays when, you know, everything was out, you know, basically if your trash day was Monday and the, the, that was a holiday, everything's going to be on a Tuesday, but I saw a lot of carts out, so they had a lot of time to, to, you know, rifle through, but, you know, I've seen some of them on bicycles with big huge bags, you know, just going somewhere.
Usually those bags are about twelve dollars.
Yeah, this, this guy just has a little wired cart that he rolls around and throws everything into, but, um, yeah, I mean, if he's using carts to, you know, take them to, to the recycling center, it seems like.
You don't see recycling centers not open yet, is it?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I went by there the other day and it was locked up. I, just a comment, David. The one on Morristown Lane.
Yes, sir.
That's the first time I, we've seen anything in, in, uh, that complex.
Well, I've caught, you know, a few different ones in there in the past, so it's kind of been a hotbed for me to, to just roll through there and make sure.
The way those streets and things, it's a strange, or a little more of a difficult area to.
Yeah, yeah, and so I believe he just, you know, came in off of Vanguard Way. And, uh, I hadn't seen him before, but, um, I, you know, let him know about our ordinance and so. Um, again, it's one of those where I'm, I'm in that area on Wednesdays because I, I've caught him in the past. And it's an easy accessible, you know, community.
Well, Morristown's the first street right off of Vanguard anyway, so.
Yeah.
Top in Irvine.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions for David on the scavengers? Thank you, sir.
And then in the month of December, I, uh, found a hundred and forty-eight cases of, uh, trash carts left within public view. Uh, addressed those with our, you know, yellow courtesy notice. As you can see, Placentia blew up a little bit, but I'm assuming because of, you know, that, that day off, that, that late day. Um, but I went over there and tagged those carts right away and, and I'm staying on top of that problem.
What the heck happened on Eldon?
Eldon's been another one of my, you know, uh, Christmas trees have been, you know, out in a, in, you know, in force. Director Echols will tell you, he's got a few of them in front of his property there, but, uh,
Yeah.
Um, I think they've been, been on top of the Christmas trees. I haven't had any complaints or, or phone calls that I've, I've heard about people calling in so far.
Um, I noticed a couple of people in my neighborhood with their trees, and I haven't had a chance to say anything to them, but white flock trees and they both had their stands still attached.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, we seem to do a pretty good job of letting people know what can be done. Have you seen a lot of trees like?
One in front of Director Echols has got the stand on there in the plastic bag.
Well, one of, one of the ones in my neighborhood, the plastic bag was on it.
They must save it because of, uh, to get it out of the house, that's probably to keep.
Keeps the needles from going all over. Okay.
But, uh, uh, with our operations meeting, I think they're doing a pretty good job of, uh, recovering, uh, uh, pretty much all the trees this year.
And this is the last week, it goes this week and that's it, right? I'll keep curious to see next week.
We'll, we'll record a file report on how many trees they collected.
And, uh, no cases of graffiti this month in December. That'll conclude my report for, uh, December twenty twenty-three. Any questions on that?
Questions? Good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, bud. All right, let's go to community-wide survey.
Thank you, Mr. President. So last month, uh, staff presented to the board the results of our twenty twenty-three community-wide survey. And the board directed staff to, to report back with, uh, data from previous surveys to compare how well we've been performing, um, in the previous years. Uh, we've been conducting community-wide surveys. We conducted five community, community-wide surveys since two thousand and twelve. Uh, you won't see data from the two thousand and twelve, um, survey on, on the staff report because that survey was specifically designed to really engage on resident on the solid waste side, more particularly on the anaerog digestion, digestion technology. Because that was when we were considering going to the organic curbside, organic recycle, organic waste curbside program. And we wanted to gauge with residents, would they accept the program? And, and, and that's what, that was the reason why we did the two thousand and twelve survey. All the surveys weren't like the like, so there were specific reasons why or specific questions in every year on the surveys. Like, for example, in the two thousand and sixteen survey, that was, we did ask a lot of questions about the importance about remaining independent. Um, that was a big issue back in two thousand and sixteen. Um, also, uh, the two thousand, uh, sixteen and two thousand and nineteen surveys, the sample size was smaller. Sample size was smaller at five hundred residents and we particularly did that, I think, for cost reasons. Um, but this, the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-one, and even twelve, twelve, twenty twelve, we did a thousand residents. Uh, and we, even though it costs a little more to do a thousand residents, it, we find that, uh, when we share the data with the public, i- it gives us a little more solid ground to stand on when we say, hey, look, we surveyed a thousand of our residents. Uh, was nearly one percent of our whole population, and this is what the residents are saying. It gives us a little more solid ground on what direction we want to go based on the feedback from our residents. So in the attachments, uh, on your staff report is, is what I was able to, to, to find like the like questions from two thousand and sixteen through two, twenty twenty-three, and you can see the comparison from those four years where we stand. So, um, I hope that, that addresses your, your concerns or issues you have to answer any questions you may have.
But, uh, so these are the, I don't know, call it ten exact common questions between the various surveys.
Exactly, very, very, very extremely similar.
Okay, gotcha. And then, um, and then, well, so the other ones, if I meant, I was looking, they're posted online as well, and we could go through.
All, either twelve, two thousand and twelve, all surveys are posted online, yes.
And the, um, I mean, the one good, good thing that I see across the board is we're improving on, in essence, customer service from staff, their.
Yeah, that was a big.
To the public, so that's.
That's great.
Great news.
Yes.
Um, the, the other question I had was, uh, the sewer, uh, sewer inspection rebate program dropped off the map unsurveyed from the last two surveys.
There was that, and also I think the, um, House of Waste had a low number two. I think it's due to COVID, might have been related to COVID.
Okay. Um, so in, I'm just trying to remember like that one quote utilized, so the, the question was basically, have you utilized the sewer inspection rebate program, yes or no? And so at one point it was forty-three percent and then it's.
Yeah. Forty-three percent, we really, that was the one, I think we had, um, one plumber going out there and just advertising the program for us. We didn't, we didn't tell this plumber to do that. He was going, hey, did you know you get a rebate program? And that was a way for him to, I think, to, uh, increase his business and, and I think it was a brand new business, so he was trying to get the word out, he's, he's out there. So he used that to his advantage. And I think that's why we had a large.
We actually had other plumbers come to staff to complain.
Yeah, they did.
Oh, he's.
This guy was being too aggressive.
Yeah, they did.
He's an independent businessman, he's out looking for work, you know?
Free marketplace, smart, uh, business person, good job. Uh, so then I guess my question would be like, should we make an effort over the next year to kind of at least self-promote this a little bit? Maybe we'll get another entrepreneur who's out there wanting to crush it?
Yeah, we, yes, of course, we will, we will definitely, um, I, I have a meeting with staff, uh, next week to talk about the results and where we can, uh, make some improvements. Uh, in the past, we have advertised the rebate program. Uh, we've done it, I think we've done a very good job rebating the program. Um, hopefully we can, we'll, we will see what we've done in the past, what we can do differently in, in the future and, and hopefully improve those numbers.
Yeah, so I think that's a good, it's a great program and it's benefiting the.
Yes.
The community, uh, every which way, so.
Definitely.
Um, all right, thank you.
I have a question on the same, same, uh, data. When did we switch from, uh, more significant rebate program to the one we presently have?
Eight years ago.
Yeah, I have to look at that again. I don't have, I'll, I'll, I'll report that back in the weekly update, but I'm going to say it was prior to two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen when we did that.
I think it was, in oh-six, oh-eight or so, when we started this program, we had substantially more sanitary sewer overflows. And that was the reason for the program. Today, it's mo- mostly just, um, a program to put in a dual cleanout, which many homes deserve and would need.
I- i- it's dual cleanout plus, um, we reimburse for CCTVing their line. So that was the, the benefit. And, and the refreshed department, the reason why we, we went to the, the previous sewer lateral assistance program is that we will reimburse residents up to like two thousand dollars to repair their, their sewer laterals. And what we've, we discovered is that a lot of these plumbers were taking advantage of residents, particularly senior citizens that didn't need the work. And so we, we shifted to this program to protect the homeowner a bit more because he said, okay, well, we're, we're reimbursed you for CCTV, but show us the line first, show us the CCTV, and then we can make recommendations for you.
I, I know from my experience, people, my customers are people I, I know that have had situations and plumbers come in, they don't find out about the CCTV program from us until plumber's done.
Right.
And I'll say, did your plumber do a CC, closed caption TV? Oh, no, they didn't even mention that.
Mm-hmm.
Well, by then it's too late.
Yeah.
So it's just that matter of educating or convincing the plumbers that it's a good thing for them and.
You know, this could be a good opportunity, maybe when we do our town hall meetings, to have some flyers out for people, uh, about that when we do our town hall meetings for the organic recycling program.
They also used to meet with the plumbers, um, you know, it's probably a changing workforce pretty continually, but.
Yeah, we, we, I think that was because that was the fallout of the plumbers upset with the other one. And, and we did have meetings with them, and here's the program, and here's how it works. After that meeting, it, it, it did die down a bit.
Yeah.
But it's an, it's an educational program for the plumbers. And then we can try to educate the, um, uh, the general population that the thing is even available.
Yes, correct.
In our new program, what's the maximum amount of money that we can?
Five hundred dollars.
Much?
Five hundred.
I think they can get both a cleanout and a CCTV. First time and then after that, it's only CCTV.
Yeah, I, yeah, that sounds kind of funny. Because I have people asking about that. Total five hundred.
That's what the website presently says.
Yeah, right.
Um, on the utilize, folks utilize the bulk item. So it's funny because y- they utilized it, they went, you know, over from nineteen to twenty-three, they went from sixty-five to seventy, so people are using it. But then when you look at the satisfied with the bulk item collection, it dropped. Do you think that had to do with, I, I, what I think it is, is we did it four times a year, three, twice a year, remember?
Yeah.
Scheduled, they did it. Now they have to do it on their own, and I think that probably.
We did that way before two thousand and sixteen. I, you know, all honesty, it's still the ninety percentile. As long as in the ninety percentile, I'm happy.
I, I, it just, you know, kind of.
It, it does, even it's ninety-one percent, that's, to me, that's, that's excellent. Um, if it dropped down to like the eighty, seventy, then, yeah, then I'd have some.
Yeah, like I said, I'm just surprised that they utilized it, but they were a little bit less satisfied with it.
It could be, it, it could be, maybe it could have been that maybe, uh, CR didn't, uh, come out the day they were supposed to collect them. You know, who knows, you know?
I think that there was also a problem with how to communicate with PR and R, and they are having staffing problems.
Sure, it could be.
It could be.
Customer service staffing problem.
I just called by House of Waste and I got picked up tomorrow on Thursday for my regular trash day, and it was pretty simple.
Yeah.
I threw our website to find out who.
Good.
A young man answered, took me about two minutes to finish it, one of my address.
That's great. I've got to drive to Anaheim, drop off my HHW, you know, got to go on the ninety-one freeway to get there.
Nope, they don't pick it up. You don't get it picked up?
No, not in Orange, no.
No.
Well, you have got to take it to the Rainbow.
Rainbow, yeah.
Leos.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it's a great program.
It's not, who is it? It's not Rainbow, it's who?
Republic.
Oh, Republic, it's still the same bu- by the high school there?
Yes.
Uh, nickel. Yeah. Yeah, okay. Interesting. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Scott, for doing that extra work. Appreciate it. All right, let's go to item four.
I know there was a request from the board, uh, to bring this item for discussion, and that was discuss the city's plan to redevelop the Fairview Development Center specific plan, and the board wanted to inquire our involvement in, in the status of, of this project. So I'm going to turn it over to our district engineer. Mark Esker is going to give a report.
Yeah, I've seen that postcard.
Yeah, I'm sure you have seen this postcard. I thought I would use this first and, and it, I just want to demonstrate a couple of things. This is the city's, uh, announcement that they're going to embark, and they have actually embarked on, uh, town hall meetings in order to get feedback and input from the, from the community as to what to do with this Fairview development program. Um, I attended the meetings, uh, this past, I think it was, uh, October timeframe. Uh, and then there's some meetings coming up, I think, late this month, and then in February, there's some follow-up meetings to this whole program. But, uh, the city builds this is a hundred and thirteen acre site that they're trying to plan. Uh, I'll say housing for, uh, and, and, um, go to the next slide, well, let me, before you go to the next slide. This is a fifteen acre site that the state of California is planning to develop. I'll go into that in a little bit more. And then this is a, an area of existing, uh, existing housing that's already there. I'm not sure if they're apartments, housing, but there's a combination of things in that, in that little area there.
Mark, do you know, is that, is that still state property?
Yes. Yes, right, as of right now, it's state property. I don't know what the MOU between the, there's a, there's a MOU between the state and the city. I don't know what it says. I don't understand the relationship, to be honest with you, because I haven't actually seen that document. But it says who's to do with what, with that, with that hundred and thirteen acre site.
Well, that large site up in the corner is served by waste management. That, that was, um.
Yes, right now, I do not believe we have, um, any service, whether it's sewer service or trash service, we do not service this particular development a- as we speak.
We don't service, we, we service the center though, don't we?
I don't believe we do. I don't know. Um, Marissa, do you know, do we service? I don't believe we do.
Remember years ago, we had asked them to kind of do a, a clean out or an inspection and they said no, so that makes sense.
Yeah, we, we, we approached the state several times to, to CCTV their line, to, to help clean it, but it fell on deaf ears.
All, all this, all this may change depending on what is actually built, um, in this, in this area. Can I go to the next slide, please?
Mark, who, who, who do we charge for the sewer service? That community is sewered right now.
Um, I, I will, yeah, um, but I don't know how that's all charged out. I know this area right in here, they're probably charged to the individual properties that are, that are here. Um, there is an apartment, I'll call it an apartment complex. Um, and then that probably goes to that property owner. Uh, I'm, I'm assuming right now that the state of California is paying for everything else, but I don't, I can't, I haven't confirmed that.
You, you know that, that little section right off of Harbor Boulevard, right dead in the middle on the right side where the red line goes in?
Oh, this right here, this is actually.
Those are all single family.
Yes.
And everything else is, um, multifamily.
Yes, if you go back one slide, um, Gina, please.
Well, with.
You'll see.
Yes, I'll say you're correct. This, this little cutout right there, single family, that's not actually.
That is not actually, that little cutout is not actually in the proposed development. So go back to the other slide. I was in a little hurry, um, uh, while I was off yesterday, uh, putting this presentation together, and I just didn't make the little cutout for that single family there.
The, what, the point I was going to make is originally the houses that were at the very, down at the very street, there's a, a different track. Those were homes that were built specifically for employees of Fairview Developmental Center. They were all doctors and high-level people, and then that, I can't remember the name of the track to the homes, but the ones above it, those were all added, okay? And, and sold. So I'd be curious to know if we're, I'm sure we're servicing all of that.
I'll get to that.
Maybe, maybe, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me get to all, all of that.
Hey, I'm.
Um, so, um, just to, to orient you with the site, you're all familiar, this is the Fairview Development Site. My laser is, is cutting out on me. Harbor Boulevard is on the east, Bear Drive comes in at this location. This is Merrimack up at that point. Um, now, I will say the state, as I mentioned, state of California is actually developing this fifteen acre parcel here. Um, there is a cutout here that's not shown on my, on this particular map that is single family. I believe we're servicing some of that, um, but, but I'll have to confirm that with you. Um, uh, let me say that the city says they're, they're planning a community for this hundred and thirteen acre site. I have not been able to come up with that number. If I take the entire boundary less the single family, I come up with, um, one hundred and forty acres. If I take everything, including the state site, it's all of this, and exclude the existing multifamily and single family that's there, I come up with a hundred and seven acres. And then if I just take this main area here, including the fifteen acres, I get, I get about eighty-six acres or so. Um, and so I'm not sure what the city's actually working on, and it's a little, uh, little cloudy to me, and I haven't seen any actual boundaries, official boundaries of what's in and what's out. I will tell you at the meeting that I attended, uh, over at the senior center off of nineteenth, I think it is, over by the DMV. Um, many people are very interested in this. The city is very aloof when they are answering those questions regarding the state's portion. I'm not sure why that is, but I will tell you in that we've issued a will serve letter to the state of California. They have currently, this is now out to bid. They plan on opening design bid build project to do two buildings, a, uh, E O C and then a warehouse. And then, of course, all the parking and, uh, utilities associated with that. They're going to have, my understanding, they will have a communication towers, and then in the parking area, there will be a painted, uh, emergency or temporary helipad in case something does happen in the community. I'm not here to debate or tell you what's in and what's out. All I'm saying is my understanding from the state of California, and they're very adamant, is this is being bid, this will be built, and they plan on awarding a bid June, July timeframe of this calendar year. So if this is out, that my understanding is in the state, the city of Costa Mesa is really dealing with this issue. But again, I don't really know because I'm not getting, um, uh, definitive information from anybody except the state of California, which is dealing with that fifteen acre site.
And Mark, just on that E O C, it is out to bid three, three contractors already. It's going to be a heck of a lot bigger than what they're talking about. That's why the city's mum on it. City has no, they tried to put up a fight and the state goes, too bad. And that's what's happening, but it's going to end up to be bigger than what they're talking about right now. I've seen the conceptuals, it's going to be a disaster.
When you say bigger, I'm not sure what that means, because every boundary in the bidding documents I showed showed basically the fifteen acre site.
Oh, no, no, they're, you're correct. Bigger buildings, helipad, the whole thing, they're adding more to that little postage stamp than what has been talked about.
Okay.
It's, I, it's just, it's going to be, it's going to be very big, but there's a reason the city's not talking about it.
Okay.
It's controversial.
To me, it's interesting, and I'm just looking at it from an aesthetic thing. That corner is probably the, if, if, if I were a developer and wanted to build houses, if I wanted to build golf course homes, that's the best corner to build golf course homes.
Yep.
That's the main part of the golf court, you know, so the state, I don't know. It, but where else are you going to put it? May- maybe right smack in the middle of it? But, uh, to me, that, that's just kind of a statement that they don't know what they're doing.
Yep. Anyway, any other questions on the site? And then I'll describe. Right now, the area, as you know, has internal sewer system. That sewer system comes in and ties in on Harbor Boulevard. It ties into a couple of fifteen-inch sewers. The sewer then continues north, um, into our sewer, well, it's dumps into our sewer in Harbor. We then convey the sewage north to Bear, where then we go into Orange County Sanitation or, uh, Sanitation District Regional System. Um, as part of this development for the state of California, we had their engineers take a look at, uh, the facilities, how many fixture units they were going to have, what's their projected water, uh, sewage generation rate. And what we found was, based on the information they gave us, uh, the sewage from this fifteen acre parcel would be less than the sewage generated from the existing facilities. And so because they were less than what was originally there, um, we went ahead and issued a will serve letter, and there were several conditions on that. Because we don't have actual building plans, because it's a design build, uh, sorry, design bid, or, uh, what do they call it? A, a, uh, it's a, it's a design and build project that's being bid. Um, they didn't have actual. Um, they didn't have actual plumbing plans and fixture plans for this site. So we put in conditions in our will serve letter that basically stated it's limited to the fifteen acre sites. It's limited to two buildings, a two-story EOC and a, a, a one-story warehouse with one helipad and one uh antenna. So we put in some constraints so that if they have, say, they decide to put in an eight-story building, I'm not saying they're doing that, we can go back and visit whether we will serve that property or not. So I just limited the will serve letter to the information they had provided us. And so, um, you know, um, Director Echols, if you have any information, maybe you could forward that to me. But what I understand is there's two buildings being built and then parking facilities and other little things like chillers and stuff like that. Um, now, this, the city now is then starting to work and get community feedback and input and they're actually going through the sequel process for the rest of the site. My understanding is California, state of California is exempt from SEQA. I don't know if that's a fact, but it appears as though they're moving forward. I didn't see anything that resembled a sequel process, but then I've only been working for your agency for three years now. So um, bear with me, I may be a little off on that. Now, with the city, they're consulting, they have hired a consultant, the consultant has actually contacted us. Uh, they're specifically the civil engineering subconsultant and we are working with their subconsultant to have them measure flows in Harbor Boulevard. We're requesting that they install flow meters at two locations. Uh, and then we will measure and meter flows, sewage flows for about a two-week period. And then we'll take a look at that and see if we have any excess capacity in the sewer that's in Harbor Boulevard. From that, we'll know then how much extra capacity we could put towards this development. If the city development exceeds um the current capacity or the capacity plus any extra capacity we might have based on the flow measuring, uh, then the city or the developer who are, or whatever partnership is taking place, um, they will have to, I'll say, build infrastructure. Um, or I will ask them to build infrastructure to accommodate the um excess capacity. So we'll see how that all plays out. Now, my understanding is there's anywhere from, I've heard numbers of eighteen hundred homes, I've heard five thousand homes, I've heard eight thousand homes, the city is not committed to any particular number. Um, and the reason is they're trying to understand from a sequel perspective what, what can fit on the site. Um, furthermore, the state of California and the city, they looked at this many, 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 many years ago when Rob Hebers was the uh, uh district engineer. And my understanding is they could potentially put in as many fi- as five thousand homes in this particular site. So the number of homes are all over the place. I do not have that information. The city is not committed to any particular number. My understanding is it will be a relationship, uh, the city will likely at some point engage with a developer. The developer will go ahead and, and develop the property and put in the residential. Uh, and right now, the city is talking to the community about uh townhomes, single family, multifamily, high rises. Um, it seems like everything is on the table right now, based on the presentations. If any of you have been to this pre- city presentation, you've seen that they've got examples of what all of these look like. The pictures that they put up on the screen for the community look really good. But again, there are people that um, after the presentation have expressed concern to the city about traffic and other impacts because there really is very limited access and egress to this site. Um, I guess at that point, I'll say that's all I know at this point. Happy to try to answer any of your questions, um, but it's probably gonna be several months before I really understand what's gonna happen at this location. I guess I, one parting word is, yeah, with the state of California, they're very interested in building a sewer to our standards, so it'd be a minimum eight-inch sewer. Um, they will build it to our standards and they are talking that they do not want to main, operate and maintain it. So they would um turn that, uh deed that new sewer over to us and then we would operate and maintain it. Um, I've, what I've done uh is asked if they can give us an acre site or a half acre site somewhere within this fifteen acres. Perhaps we could put up a fence and then park some of our longer-term emergency equipment like uh generators, lay flat hoses, things like that. Um, I'm not sure that that's gonna come to fruition, but we'll see. Uh, state made no promises and in fact, I, they, they've sort of um said they'll think about it, but don't plan on anything. That's what I'm being sort of told right now. But we'll see what, how this all plays out in the, in the end. Now, as far as the city portion of the project, um, I'm gonna have no idea what's being planned. Is it gonna be a city-owned uh residential area? Are they gonna operate and maintain it? Is it gonna be sold to private people? I don't know how that's all gonna play out. If this property will be developed and sold off, uh, then I would imagine that we would take over sewage. As far as solid waste, my understanding is if single family and then up to um four, uh, I'll say condos or residential on a single property, we would serve solid waste. Multifamily, the city would take on that responsibility. So again, because we don't know what the blend of single family, multifamily, townhomes, um, high rises, all that stuff is, I have no idea who's gonna get what or where or when. Um, we're just in a holding pattern while the city does their due diligence to uh prepare the SEQA documents. That's when, when those SEQA documents are published, that's when we'll exactly know what's being planned for the site.
Mark, you'd mentioned earlier that that site comes out to Harbor and then goes up to Bear Street. Then you mentioned that if, if we, they need to, they're gonna provide whoever, the city or the state, provide you with alternatives or if, if, if you're, after you do your capacity studies, that they may have to do some work. Would they tie into that same line or, or do you anticipate a new line or?
Well, I'm, I'm, I guess my thought, my, my current thought is um, the state's coming in with their own uh pipeline that's serving their facility. And right now, I'm treating that as a separate sewer facility because I, I don't think it's gonna be over eight inches. And, and I think that, that uh if it's only eight inches, we can't service this. Now, how much excess capacity will we have? I guess we'll have to wait and see as uh this starts to move forward and if this is developed and, 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 and becomes operational, we can measure flow and see exactly what we have in our pipeline. And then if there, if it is turned over to us and we take over O and M and, and those types of responsibilities, we'll have to measure flows, see what kind of excess capacity we could dedicate for a portion of this. But there is existing fifteen inch and eighteen inch sewers that come off of the property and tie into our system now. I'm assuming that some of that may get reused. However, in talking with the city's uh civil engineering subconsultant, they really don't know until they start laying out the different property options and use options and where all the sewers are gonna be and what makes sense and what doesn't make sense.
I, I guess, uh, the, my, my other question is, do you anticipate um, any disruption to the golf course with them having to put lines out through any of the golf course?
I won't speak for water, electric or natural gas. Um, I do, I will tell you that when the state of California originally came to us, they, they, they were going to um, uh, come across the golf course with what they call a utility corridor and they wanted to potentially take the sewer since they were gonna be tearing up a utility corridor and putting in power, water, sewer, all this stuff. And the reason they needed that is my understanding from the state of California's planning civil engineer is that the Mesa Waters requiring them to have two water feeds, one from the north and one from the south. I don't know how it's ended up because my under, what I told them was, we don't have capacity to go in to, well, it would ultimately feed to our Harbor pump station, which is over um by the little El Campeon Market over there. Um, and I told them to, to take their wastewater over there, they would have to basically rebuild our pump station. So that uh, with a much larger pump station. And so that basically took the option of taking sewage to the south and to that particular sewer shed. It took it off the map. And so they came up with an alternative that would, that would go along the outskirts and I, and I don't know if they're gonna put a dirt road or a paved road or what they're gonna do, but it looks like it's gonna come through here, go up along Shelby Circle, head down Fair Drive and tie into our system over there at Fair Drive and Harbor, and Harbor Boulevard. Now, again, it's only a will serve letter. There was a conceptual. My understanding is uh whatever contractor, uh, engineering firm, developer, uh, team that gets the design build project, they will actually come up with the actual um sewer ops, options for this. But the state wanted to give the bidders at least one option that was viable. And so that's all I know about that as of today.
Build the state for all of these years service for the?
No, we never have.
That's something that we could consider or?
Sure.
Made for the new people.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We can definitely consider that.
We've never built for the fairgrounds either.
No.
That's state property.
Right, right.
They've caused us issues over the years.
Might be exempt because of our state agency. Yeah, yeah, it might be exempt. We'll look into it.
Ain't anybody to pay it.
Oh, that's right.
Or they need it for something else. Thank you. That's, that's a great update. Um, I don't, I haven't been to one of the meetings yet.
I've been to one. I'm gonna go to the one at the end of the month.
Okay, see you there.
I think I'm. I'm gonna do the virtual one because.
Oh, okay.
I take more notes that way, you know?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Mark, good job.
Um, that's all the items of study and closing items. Um, obviously, I don't think she's listening in, but our, if Arlene is, we wish her the best. Hope, hopefully her recovery goes well and I'm sure you'll keep us updated, Scott, you always do, so. Um, anything else for the good of the order?
Okay, then we will adjourn to our regular me, our board meeting on January, whatever.
I, I just wanted to.
Oh, you have comment, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to tell the board that um, uh, the sanitation district had Brad review whether it would be a conflict on the water district and the sand district. And it's not changed the legislation seventy-five years ago to allow that. Um, and there presently are two, two board members, it could be a third one and I would be a fourth one that could serve on both boards.
You wanna give any other updates on what's going on with your campaign?
Fabulously.
We are hoping to, so we were hoping to hear. When do they make a decision?
Um, they're, 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 they will interview the, um, and they will probably, well, they will include their process with potential interviews at their uh January seventeenth board meeting. Uh, I don't, they, they have the option to make the decision.
So water, that's up for lectures for LAVCO too, that's hisler.
Yeah, no, Jim, Jim is, Jim is a candidate.
On for LAVCO also.
Yes.
I think his, yeah, his term, this renewal for his term on LAVCO, didn't we, didn't we figure that? Yeah.
I think there are three or four candidates for LAVCO that are up for election.
What would you wanna be on LAVCO? Sorry. Okay, anything else, anybody? And we are adjourned. Thank you staff very much.